Welcome to our business agility series, a spotlight on the skilled agile framework. This is our second session and we are looking at the values and principles of the agile manifesto. As we discuss the values, we would want to build a firm knowledge of the manifesto and it still is deep foundation in our thoughts. Today, we are also looking at the philosophical needs of values and principles and why we should all have ones. And when you go into many organizations, you would see values and principles. And as I teach agile and other courses, I do ask this very tough question. Does anyone remember the values within an organization? And I do get people looking for the values either on the wall, in the air, or trying to find their staff IDs. But it's so important for us to know much about agile values. Before we even discuss the agile values which relate to the skilled agile values, I don't want anyone going out of here to start talking about agile values, agile values and principles, agile values and principles. The first thing I would like you to do is if you work for a company, look for their values. Write them down and link their values to the agile values and principles. And that's what business agility from the skilled agile framework focuses on. Let's connect an entire organization's values, principles, activities to agile ways of working. And as we introduce agile ways of working, people would notice new habits and that leads to a new culture within organization. So as you go back to work or as you start thinking about companies, before anyone starts talking about agile values, ask them the big question. Do you know the values within your organization? Are there any principles within the organization that we have that relate to the agile values? Why do I reflect on that? I've met people who say we have accounting principles, we have management principles, we have marketing principles, we have IT principles. And there are so many principles. Why is agile values and principles much better than all of these principles? And I take a step back and say, look, all these principles are great. They are only great if we link them to the values within the organization and that is business agility. So the values in general will help us think about the foundations that agile is built on. And when you look at the agile manifesto, it's made up of 68 words, the values and the principles. I would only touch on the values and the principles within this session. It's an interesting piece. Once you have this at the back of your mind, you can always talk agile. And I represent it with this umbrella. Agile is not a framework. Agile, the agile manifesto represents a set of values and principles. And we have frameworks that teams can use and we have frameworks that large organizations can use. But the frameworks used by teams are also embedded in the frameworks that large organizations would use. So agile manifesto, four foundational values and 12 supporting principles. Let's look at the four values. Individuals and interactions over processes and tools. Working software over comprehensive documentation. Customer collaboration over contract negotiation and then responding to change over following a plan. What we can see is the format is A over B. And we are also reminded that there's a need for empirical experience to embed all those areas of A over B. Whilst we take a look at it, the focus is on A, which is the place that's highlighted and in bold. Individuals and interactions, working software, customer collaboration, responding to change. And when we focus on these areas, we'll deliver to the customers' expectation. But the areas of B, which have not been made in bold, are also important and we are going to discuss them in this session. So first, let's look at individual interactions over processes and tools. We will all allude to the fact that the more we engage with each other, we are able to collaborate, share, refine knowledge and draw more insights. And the popular quote being two heads are better than one is heavily promoted in individuals interacting. But in this age and time, we can't focus only on individuals interacting without having the necessary processes and the necessary tools to help us. And for the necessary processes and tools to be put in place, we need leadership support on this journey. And leaders will help create that environment where we have the right processes in place and the right tools to support us. And I link it to this pandemic. Organizations that were well-prepared with the right processes and tools were able to continuously create that individual interactions. Those who had a well-prepared business continuity plan were able to put in place the right processes, were able to put in place the right tools and help teams communicate and engage. It's not all about zoom, 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 or let's zoom it on. It's about making sure that teams can use the right tools to send messages and still engage as if they were in the team environment. And the processes put in place like daily stand-ups, having meetings which are necessary with the right agendas would help create that environment of individuals continuously interacting and sharing knowledge. So have you got a good plan to embed the right processes and tools to ensure individuals continuously interact? Our focus will be let's create an environment where individuals can interact with the right processes and tools. Next is working software over comprehensive documentation. I've been working with companies that are in the medical industry. And when we start talking about comprehensive documentation, they say, William, we need an element of good documentation. We know we don't have to over-document everything, but we can't implement some systems without the necessary documentation supporting it. But we argue that we need a working system, a working solution, a working product. And that motivates the teams, that motivates our stakeholders, that motivates our business. And we won't spend so much time producing volumes and volumes of document that do not add value to the entire process. So as we think about delivering the process, we'll focus on working systems, working solutions, working products, working outcomes, working papers, working thesis. So I am avoiding using the word working software because that's what the agile manifesto is built on. And I've worked with different organizations and we've shifted that gear and said, let's take a look at working outcomes, working systems. And that is the mindset I want you to have after the session. Customer collaboration over contract negotiation. Contracts are important. I trained a law firm and they said, William, we'll be hard of work if there are no contracts. But we want to also build trust, an environment where clients and vendors can work together and manage the flow of work. When changes arise, they should be able to have that trust to solve them amicably. So there should be that opportunity where the client and the customer are working amicably to resolve issues. And when I look at this particular value, I know the product owner, the commercial manager, the contracts team are heavily looking at this particular value. We need to collaborate, but we also need a contract to guide the process. And when changes arise, we would use our trust, we'll have conversations instead of going to court to discuss all the things that are happening or the changes that are needed. So there is a good need for customer collaboration over contract negotiations. Contracts are important, but we'll focus on customer collaboration. The next value is we need to respond to change over following a plan. Yes, plans are good, but there's a need for us to be responding to change. Due to the uncertainties involved in delivering large programs, digital programs and initiatives, we need to have that flexibility built into the process. The flexibility is not with the mindset that a change can come rapidly all the time. We need to manage any changes which occur. And if anyone introduces a change, there should be a change process which allows the teams to be able to implement the change quickly rather than suppress the entire change process. And I've seen project managers or I just, I think I've just mentioned a role that pushes back change a lot. With their managing scope creep, they are doing a fantastic work. But as a PM as well, we also need to respond to change that would enable the customer to stay ahead in the market. If we say this is the scope, we can make any changes to the scope and that's all you get. We don't tend to deliver value to the customer. So let's focus on responding to changes that would enable our customers to stay ahead in the market. And if we can do that, we will continuously deliver value to the business. In summary, whilst there is a huge focus on the areas in bold, individual interactions, working software, customer collaboration, responding to change, the areas which are not in bold, which I refer to as B, are also necessary to create the right environment that would enable us to deliver value within the organization. The focus is value, value, value. All these values of the agile manifesto must be linked with our values within the organization. And whatever we deliver must bring back business benefit, either tangible or intangible. And I know the portfolio focuses on measuring the tangible and intangible benefits. And while we work in an agile framework mindset, we are able to give the business those tangible benefits. I am going to look at the 12 principles behind the agile manifesto. And I know I've increased the pace, but in this 20 minutes, I can only touch on as much as I can. And I would like to dive in straight away. We've got the 12 principles, most of you have seen it. Let's take a look at those 12 principles, which is part of the agile manifesto. Number one, our highest priority is to satisfy the customer through early and continuous delivery of valuable software. Who else should we satisfy? Customer is king, internal, external. If we deliver valuable outcomes, systems, solutions, updates, changes to the customer's environment and they can immediately use those, then we've delivered a solution, an outcome that would bring value into their environment. And if we can't satisfy them, then what, who else are we working for? So the focus is can we bring out solutions that will be of benefit to the customer? And how do we go about the process of bringing those changes? The next step is we'll welcome changing requirements even when they are late in development. And I see each principle linking to the first one. Our highest priority is to satisfy the customer through early and continuous delivery of valuable software. When we do principle number two, we've dealt with number one. We'll welcome changing requirements even late in development. Agile process harness change for the customer's competitive advantage. We would have a plan and the customer's environment will change. But for us to satisfy principle number one, which is our highest priority, to satisfy the customer, if the customer's environment changes, we need to adapt to those changes. And it's the role of the product manager within a skilled agile framework. And within an agile Scrum environment is the role of the product owner. We'll have other supporting roles helping them in managing the changing requirements that are coming. And when a change comes in, because our roadmap, our plans are considered a roadmap and we are only committed to delivering what's in that sprint, what's in that particular program increment. Every other item, we can update and make changes to and start working on them in the next program increment or in the next sprint. With that mindset, we can always stay ahead with the customer and deliver working outcomes that would help them stay ahead in the market. The market is competitive. And a book that reminds me of how the market changes quite a lot is the Blue Ocean, Red Ocean Strategy, which I was having a discussion with a day in our morning session. So the Blue Ocean, Red Ocean Strategy talks about market competition and how businesses can stay ahead in the market. Welcoming changes means we can deliver working softwares frequently within a couple of weeks. And our preference will be shorter time skills. I've heard about waterfall, I've heard about agile and there are so many other words that will describe the waterfall delivery approach as. Yep, let's work on a particular solution, let's gather all the requirements, let's create a design, let's get a development team to build a solution. Whilst the business and everyone waits, we've got our requirements detailed and we know this is going to bring us outcome. Let's wait for three months, four months, six months before we share and get feedback. No, that does not work in our current changing environments. Or that hasn't made sense and delivered value over time. So we prefer shorter time skills where we work in periods of one to six weeks. I've had teams using six-week sprints, I've had teams using four-week sprints, I've had teams using three weeks. Their recommended time scale within an agile environment is one to four weeks. But I've seen teams use six weeks, which has enabled them to build a solution or a feature of the solution and get feedback from the customer. So we use a shorter time skills, getting feedback and aligning the product to the customer's expectation. And this is where we're delivering to the customer's competitive advantage. In that environment, we expect everyone to come together to help us in delivering valuable outcomes. And principle number four sees it all. The message here is business people and developers must work together daily throughout the project. Daily is a stretch, I know it. How can we work daily? It's so hard to work daily and communicate with business people because I've been there. Operations needs to focus on delivering outcomes and satisfying the customer. The teams delivering change have to focus on delivering updates, solutions that would help the operations team satisfy the customer's needs. And we can't be in their face daily, no. The principle is good, but we can't be in their face daily. And if you keep knocking on my door, if I'm the head of finance, I'll tell you, sorry, I've got meetings, come to me later. I know we're working in an agile environment, so we must work daily, no. Daily is great, but it's too extreme. The mindset here is business people and development teams must all work together throughout the project by making sure that they don't conflict with each other's time and allow each team to work to deliver their expected outcome. And one of the managers said to me, William, I've got the development teams knocking on the door and coming to my teams, asking questions, is it allowed for them to be coming to us? And I said, yes, agile principle number four says we must work together daily. But they forget we, the operations team, have to satisfy the customers. And if they come to you daily, you can tell them to book a meeting and I'll come to the meeting. Have a clear agenda and let's get outcomes out of that agenda. So if we have this mindset and we agree on a culture and a new environment, it leads to principle number five. We are creating environments where we have motivated individuals. We are not just saying the development team, the teams building the product must be motivated. We're talking about the operations team, they'll give us requirements, they'll test our outcomes, they'll be part of our process, they'll give us feedback. And if we piss them off, I've used the word interestingly, if we annoy them, they won't come to our meetings, they'll serve as blockers and they will not be motivated. So if we're building projects around motivated individuals, it's not only the delivery team, it involves everyone in the process. And we are giving everyone the environment, the support they need and the trust to get the job done. In the operations, they'll also be coming to our meetings, they'll be bringing documents, they'll be helping us refine all the product informations, backlog refinement meetings and testing, reviews. If we don't motivate them, I am sorry, they wouldn't come to our meetings. And principle number six tells us more. The most efficient and effective method of conveying information to a within a development team is face-to-face communication. COVID tells us more that face-to-face communication is not always possible. There are other ways of having discussions and zoom, 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 let's keep zooming it has been a good tool in helping organizations continuously communicate. There are many ways of communication, coming on Zoom, Microsoft Teams, Adobe Connect and other tools. And being able to share our information precisely and clearly helps us make quick decisions. Emails are great, but if we can have a quick meeting and deal with a particular problem, let's have that meeting, let's deal with the problem and move on. I don't want to be copied in 50 emails when we have, we could just come to a face-to-face, agree on a way forward, identify options and solve those. When we create that effectiveness, we are able to deliver working software, which is the primary measure of progress. What gets done is what we measure. And there's a need to shift the focus during the development process. The emphasis here is have we got a clear definition of what done is and how that product outcome solution delivers value to the customer. So if we have that clear definition of progress, we are able to measure those and we build that healthy relationship with our customer. And some events that enable us to measure progress are sprint reviews, show and tells, inviting the customer to the table to have a look at what we've done so far and they can give us feedback in the process and then we can always improve. So what gets measured gets done. And if we can use all these events, we are continuously delivering working outcomes, solution, not just software, products, systems to help the customer. Principle number eight. We need to build, having a sustainable development environment. We don't want teams shifting, oh, we're working in three-weeks sprints. Oh, now we're having four-week sprint. Oh, now we're having six-week sprint. Oh, we didn't do so well, so let's change it to nine-week sprint. No, let's have a stable cadence that everyone involved knows. If we have meetings twice a week, let's have those meetings twice a week, that's a stable cadence. If we have sprint reviews at the end of each month, let's keep that stable cadence. And if everyone knows and is aware of it, they are able to plan and work with all of us to make sure that we maintain that stable cadence. And when we have that stable cadence in place, we also want to focus on the technical skills, the technical tools and everything that we need that will help us build a valuable software, a valuable outcome, a valuable product. And here, when we have sessions like capacity planning, we don't want to build features alone, we don't want to always refactor, we don't always want to maintain. We want to make sure that we're taking a whole look at the product being built and considering the content that would help us maintain a good working environment. Either a good system environment that is not slow and continuously delivering value to the customer. I know I am done with my 30 minutes. I've got principle number 10, principle number 11 and 12. I will touch on both briefly and then I'll take questions and wrap up the session. Keeping it simple, complex projects just take too long. Manage your projects thinking about minimum viable products. But before you think about minimum viable products, think about minimum marketable features. If you can build that mindset of minimum marketable features, you can then work towards a minimum viable product. I do hear people start talking, oh, we need to build a minimum viable product. But have you got a set of features that will lead to your minimum viable product? Define them and then the teams can build those products and create a simple backlog that is always prioritized and is prioritization, prioritization, prioritization. If we can prioritize, we would think about the requirements, we would think about the design and the teams are much closer to the work being done and they can always give the product owner, the product manager, the business owners feedback. If they give the product owner, product managers and everyone feedback, we can use those feedbacks to improve the entire process and help in delivering solutions that deliver value to the customer. Our number one highest priority is to deliver valuable outcomes to the customer. And that is our highest priority. For us to do that and maintain that stable environment, principle number 12 says it all. Let's reflect to become more effective, let's adjust our behaviors based on the feedback we get. And when you leave this session, always remember, feedback is the breakfast of champions. If you don't get feedback early, if you don't reflect and if you don't adjust continuously, you would not be able to deliver value to your customer. The key takeaways in this session are, we are building products for people, we are changing mindset, we are creating a change in culture and there are frameworks and tools and methodologies that will support us. Above all, the agile values and principles serve as the foundation for creating an environment that motivates people and environments that brings everyone to the table to continuously build the change that we want to see. Any questions? Thank you so much for joining today. Has anyone got any questions from today's session?
Hi.
Hello.
Hi, my name is Lyde. I've got a question. I actually started here, gonna talk more about safe agile. But I'm gonna ask my question anyway, maybe you can answer. Um, with my organization, we just started to implement Scrum at scale.
Okay.
So I just want to know what, how different this is from skilled agile.
Okay.
Just same thing, but in a different framework, in a Scrum framework. Thank you.
Here, the Scrum at scale framework has, yeah, it came around quite 2019. And initially, most Scrum alliance group members said, you can, if you want to, there's no way of scaling a team and you should just use Scrum teams. But from feedback received from their customers, they went back, sat on the table and agreed to bring out a framework that will fit into their customers' environment. So the framework that has been brought out was the Scrum at scale. I like safe, I will be biased and I'll talk about why I am biased. Safe has a transformation roadmap and for the organizations I've gone into, we've had agile foundation training and then we've trained leaders. There has always been a gap in the market where in project environments, leaders are unaware of what's happening. When I say unaware, they don't have the necessary, let me see, they have the necessary knowledge and understanding, but they are not deep into what the teams are doing to understand the framework, to ask the right questions. but they are not deep into what the teams are doing to understand the framework, to ask the right questions and to support the teams. The skilled agile framework embeds leaders in the entire process and leaders cannot be part-time anymore, they must involve themselves in the entire process. So when we go into organizations, we first train leaders and then we train all the teams. I know Scrum at scale is encouraging that, but I think they were late into the market in offering all those services and helping organizations scale and transform their ways of working. And my recommendation has always been skilled agile framework over other scaling frameworks. There isn't, the difference is, both of them, I think the big difference is safe is well orchestrated, it's got all the um knowledge behind it, it's got all the um experience and all the feedback from customers and it's been around since twenty eleven. Scrum at scale has been around since twenty nineteen. I am very biased, I know. So I hope I have answered your question.
Okay, thank you. All right, you're really biased.
Yeah, I know, I know. I should be agnostic, but I've come to love the skilled agile framework because uh my first initial con- my first contact with safe, I sat in the leading safe course, which was, which was for leaders. And it made me aware of the gap we've created by the various frameworks. Scrum only trains initially, Scrum was Scrum master product owner. There was no other training for leaders, there was no other training for the development team. And it took quite long for the Scrum Alliance to wake up and bring in free um trainings for leaders and everyone involved in the process. And safe has made the provision for me to train marketing, finance and all other teams. So I think it's all encompassing as a framework. And that's my view on the safe framework.
Okay, yeah, I understand now. I think why we are just sticking to Scrum at scale is because um the framework is just um this of Scrum is where it's implemented, implemented in just one department, not the whole organization. And the, they are still trying to gain grants, make um the Rolls Royce and they are still trying to make um the organizations see that Scrum is good, Agile is good. So um maybe we can sell safe to them and see.
I am all up for business, I've got my hands up, I'll send my email address and I'm all up for business. All right, yeah, I can really talk about safe till tomorrow morning, but it does the right thing. Yeah, any other questions?
Yes, William, thanks, William, for, can you hear me?
I can hear you loud and clear, Uem.
Okay, thanks, William, for today's session. Uh, I was just wondering about the twelve, um, you know, when you talk about the twelve principles behind the manifesto, the twelfth one talked about at regular intervals, you know, reflecting and then uh and things like that. Now, you, you also did say that it's good for the team or the organization to have a tempo, the follow, which is to bring about stability.
Yeah.
But if on reflecting, you find out that a particular ethos or way of doing something is not working, would it suggest that you change, which is in my own opinion supposed to be the idea behind agile?
Um, there is, whilst we reflect, we need to take actions and we need, we'll prioritize those actions. How, what happens, I didn't want to use the word however, what happens within some teams are, we reflect at the end of our second week and immediately we, we say, oh, two weeks is not working for us, let's change to three weeks, great. Then we reflect again at the end of the third week, oh, three weeks is not working for us, let's change to four weeks. We've not spent enough time to understand why things are not working. So why don't we work for some time embedding a two-week cadence, a two-week pace? And if we embed the two-week pace for over a period of time, let's say three months, and we really notice that we've been able to resolve the priority issues, the priority outcomes from the process and within that time period, it's not really working for us. Then let's make a change. Change should be done in a more organized way. And I have seen teams who said, William, we just changed from two weeks to three weeks. I'm sure next week we'll change from three to four and then for the following one, we'll change from four to five. We just don't have that cadence in the team. So applying cadence will require time to iron out issues, time to identify issues and then time to refine the whole process to help us deliver our business value to our customer. And I will always go back to principle number one. Our highest priority is to satisfy the customer through early and continuous delivery of valuable outcomes, products, solutions, system. And if we change our cadence and it's not helping us do this, then I think we are not delivering outcomes that will help the customer. Any other questions, Uem?
Thanks, William, I mean, you've clarified it in terms of the fact that whenever we're dealing with change, there's gotta be that period of just making sure you try it out successfully for a period of time to see and you know, triggers and things before you can now try to say, let's initiate another change, yeah, you clarified that, yeah, thanks for that.
Thank you.
Hello, William.
Hi, Carlos.
Yeah, um, I want to find out, these principles, the top principles, do they get reviewed? Because I'm asking, looking at um some of the principles where, let's say, we, we talk about having face-to-face meetings or working with the daily, the business people daily, that kind of thing. And in times like this, when that is not possible, so I want to find out if these principles get reviewed over time, yeah.
It's creating a mindset and when we say daily, daily went to the extreme. And I know there's been conversations within the agile community and environment. It's time to review the principles, it's time to review the values. Of course, some of the principles need to be changed or updated. But what the Agile Alliance has done is, they said, this principles and values create a mindset. And when we say daily, we are not saying go to the extreme of meeting people all the time, but have that mindset that you need to engage with the teams involved. And all the principles are there to create a mindset and a culture. And sometimes we don't have to take them just as we see them in letters. So I've left, working software is the primary measure of progress. So working products, working systems, working outcomes, working thesis, working solution, working um trampoline or working uh hardware should be our primary measure of progress. So updating them often would just not give it the, uh, let's see, the I don't think we should update it, uh, it's good as it is, it should just be shifting our mindset and it should be shifting our focus as we look at new ways of working.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah. Any other questions? We've got one minute on the clock.
Thank you very much, William.
Okay, thank you all for joining today's session.
Thank you, William.
And before you go, a quick reminder, next week, we've got Ula, who's an agile coach and a consultant working with big organizations around the world. She's going to be talking about the agile mindset. The last week of September, we've got a panel team who will be answering all your questions. So do bring questions and it won't be you hearing my good sweet voice all the time. I am going to make sure that we vary it and bring more expertise and more people to add value to the sessions. So I'll send a feedback questionnaire around and do send me your feedback after this particular sessions. Thursday, we've, uh, Friday, we've got SQL and data modeling. In October, we'll be having agile coaching sessions and I look forward to seeing you in all those sessions. And also thank you for joining our Monday agile testing session. Have a wonderful day and I look forward to seeing you also, thank you.